Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all of those who have passed away in our community. Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Denny here?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, three eight minutes of the Scranton firefighters pension commission meeting held June 19, 2019. Three B minutes of the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held June 19, 2019. Three C minutes of the Scranton police pension commission meeting held June 19, 2019. Three D minutes of the composite pension board meeting held June 19, 2019. Three E agenda for the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held July 17, 2019. Three F tax assessors results report for hearing date held July 10, 2019. Three G tax assessors report for hearing date to be held July 31, 2019. Three H agenda for the city planning commission meeting to be held July 24, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, receive them filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Yes, I have two. First, the annual St. Joseph Center's summer festival is being held this weekend, Friday, July 26 through Sunday, July 28 on the campus of Marywood University behind the athletic center. And second one I have hits home for me because it is a benefit that's being held for two of my uncles. I just want to read the little excerpt here. Friends and family have planned to benefit for John and Billy Trentley. Both brothers were diagnosed with cancer within two weeks of each other. John has advanced prostate cancer and Billy has multiple myeloma. Together, along with their families, they are facing this battle. The benefit will be held September 21 from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at St. Mary's Center in Scranton to help defray the costs of treatments and travel expenses to Sloan-Kettering Hospital in New York City. Tickets are $20 and will be available at the door. There will be basket raffles, basket of cheer, 50/50, entertainment, food, wine, and beer. If you would like to donate a basket or volunteer, please call Ann at 570-290-5518 or Peggy at 570-468-5068. Please come out and support these two wonderful men, again, who are my uncles, and their battle with cancer. Thank you.
I have one brief announcement. Sunday, August 25 will be the third annual Bob McGough 5K. So please come out and try to participate to that. Bob was our colleague and our friend, and he's missed dearly, and this is a very successful event each year. All of us have participated in the past. I will expect to see my colleagues there as well. It is also the third and final leg of the city council cup, which we give to the fastest female and fastest male runners in a three-race series, and that's always an interesting part of the event that day as well. So hope to see you on Sunday, August 25.
A few announcements. First, an executive session was held regarding a personnel matter concerning the appointment to the vacancy in the mayor's office. The Lackawanna County three-on-three basketball tournament will be conducted this weekend on the 1 and 200 blocks of Wyoming Avenue. Games are scheduled for Friday and Saturday, July 26, 27, and July 28. July 28 is reserved as a rain date, so keep in mind there will be road closures. Colts bus pickup and discharge will be done on the 100th block of Franklin Avenue on Friday and Saturday due to the road closures. And next Wednesday, on July 31 at 12 noon, council will hold a public caucus with Pell right here in council chambers, and that's to discuss the city's exit plan.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker today is Joan Hodowanitz.
Joan Hodowanitz, city resident and taxpayer. I sat through all the interviews on Monday afternoon when we get out almost 5:00 p.m., but I will say I think that was an example of good governance. A lot of citizens have issues and concerns and not many opportunities to express those concerns with their representatives. And even though you may have thought it dragged on forever and ever, I think some good ideas came out there. For example, Mr. Jay Walsh mentioned the fact of a forensic audit, and I strongly agree with him. Now, a forensic audit is very time-consuming and expensive. It is not the same thing as the annual audits that we have been conducting independently every year for the city. But a forensic audit is appropriate when there is evidence, not just suspicion, but evidence of criminal wrongdoing. And I think we have crossed that line. So hopefully the next mayor will discuss that with his department heads and with the current auditors and see if the expense is justified. One of the things I think the people of Scranton are concerned about is not just removing the mayor, but anyone else who was, who may be a city employee who was involved in his wrongdoing. And with regard to that, a forensic audit should not look at just one department, should look at all the departments in the city. Obviously, Lips is a prime candidate, but even a department like Human Resources. We saw this week that Edward Wydow Sr. pled guilty to involvement in this fraud scheme. And I pulled up a report from the newspaper from May 31, 2015. Scranton mayor, that's Mr. Courtright, hired brother of campaign donor for new position. The campaign donor, of course, was Edward Wydow Sr. Now, what's interesting about this incident was that when Mr. David Wydow filled out his application with HR, he never answered the question about whether he ever had a felony conviction. And apparently, it raised no red flags as HR processed his application. So there's a whole lot that needs to be looked at in terms of policies and procedures throughout the city's administration. Another thing, I think it's way past time that the city establish a hotline for fraud, waste, and abuse. The county has had one for some time, and if ever a city needed such a hotline, it's Scranton, Pennsylvania. That thing could make money if it charged a fee. And also, I agree with the editorial recently in The Times-Tribune that the city should reconsider having the county handle the collection of delinquent taxes. Why are we paying any third party, let alone NRS, to do that for us when we could have worked out an arrangement which would be more cost-effective with the county? We shouldn't be paying for something that we could get otherwise. And other than that, I want to wish whoever becomes interim mayor much luck and much support. We have nowhere to go but up, and I'm sure we're going to go up, and let's hope that everything works out for the best. Thank you.
Bob Bowles, Scranton. I know we're going through a lot of issues right now, appointing somebody to take the reins of the city. Quite honestly, I don't think any council member should be appointed to the mayor's position. Wayne, don't take it personally. It's just my opinion. We brought many things before council, and a lot of things were never decided, and those that were decided didn't do us any benefit. I still think the appointment to anybody to this mayor's seat should be done by the courts to take out any questions and doubts in our minds. We have a hell of an issue ahead of us, and we're going to have a bigger issue in November. I think it should be an open general election. I don't think either party, Republican, which we've seen what the chairman of the Republican Party did in the last deal, and I don't think anybody in the Democrat side should do it. I think it should be done by the people. We're the people, all of us, everybody watching this. Let us make our decision who we want as the next mayor in the city of Scranton, not any political body. And that's where this has got to stop, once and for all. And I believe that's where you need to go, that's where you need to be. I know there's some qualified people that came here, want to run for the interim position, but I didn't hear anybody talk about the rain tax, how they're going to do anything for the city, how they're going to bring employment to the city, what they could do. We all love the city, but that's not going to bring us employment, it's not going to increase the tax base, that we decrease the tax rate. None of that I heard from a lot of people. It's just that we want to be, but we don't know what we want to be, and that's the problem here. It's going to take a strong hand to straighten this mess out, the cooperation with the council. I brought up about Naug Park, yet nobody's jumped on the wagon with me to say that Naug Park Authority shouldn't be doing what they're doing with 280 parking spaces for $100,000 a year. It's ludicrous. It should be at least $300,000, $400,000 a year for parking that many cars in Naug Park. The Naug Park Authority should be disbanded. Look at our swimming pools. They want to destroy Naug Park, the senior pool, put a splash park in? Do we all want to go stand there at our age and stand in a splash park? You know, these are the issues we got. Look at Novembreno Park. I mean, we destroyed a swimming pool that we put in hundreds of thousands of dollars to build. Where are the citizens of Scranton? We can't even hire lifeguards because we're disorganized, we're dysfunctional, but the citizens in this city paid the price this summer with the high heat. Look around, how many pools are closed? Nobody knows what's going on here. Nobody ever has, but you haven't worried about the citizens. You can't argue about the taxes. Maybe we should call the Trumpster and let him take a residence at the federal building and straighten the city out. I'm sure they'll get straightened out real quick. The school district, what are we doing? We're not fighting them, we're letting them run rampant over us. Remember, we get taxed by three bodies, the county, the school, and the city. And all three bodies are destroying our infrastructure in this city. Yeah, we could build apartments for people to stay, but where are the jobs? Where's the employment? Where's the foresight to grow? I don't see any of it. I've been in business 57 years, and I'm a lifelong resident of the city. You know, people just take it for granted, and it's sad that we're here. I brought up the 500 parking spaces at the mall. We now know Mr. Basagoli has nothing to do with it, yet nobody's challenging the people that took the lease in succession to give us those 500 parking spaces. They belong to the people in the city of Scranton. They're our spaces, they were part of the agreement. We're giving away, that's all we do is give away, but we're not doing anything here. You let Pat Hinton take over the coffee shop up there, yet we don't even have an ethics commission yet. And Bill, you were doing that, pushing it, it should be pushed to its fullest extent. If we're going to have it, let's make it work. Let's have accountability in this city, once and for all. But, you know, where we're heading, it's just a sad, sad sight. We're disgraced, we're humiliated on what's going on around here, but we can't have political bodies making our decision anymore. Let the people in this city, the senior citizens that are getting penalized more than anybody, a lot of the people could move out of here. They're here, they brought us the morals, the values, and the principles we all grew up in here. I've heard from a candidate that wants to run here to bring jobs there, but that candidate doesn't even work in the city. She works for Lee High Valley Healthcare, she works in Toby Hannah. Where are you employed here? You lead by example. If you don't have a job in the city, don't tell me you're going to bring people here. But you guys got to make a decision. I think you should push it to the courts and let them make it, and I don't think any council member should take the seat as the temporary mayor. I think it should just stay in Pat's hands for the duration, and council could still go ahead and make their decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Elman.
Well, council, it looked like our mayor had been the topic of my conversation almost every place I went the past couple of weeks. I don't believe in kicking a man in the teeth when he's down, but I'd like to say Bill was carried into these halls on a satin pillow and then dumped into a garbage can. So be it. I mentioned once before, I didn't vote for him, I was against him, but I always liked him. I've known him longer than probably some of you guys up there. I appreciate all those people that applied for the mayor's seat and the council, but we don't need some neophytes that wants politics all of a sudden without ever having any interest over the years to attend city functions like council or library, anything. This isn't the place for them to get their 15 minutes. The gravity of this coming election, I think you people need to put the council seat back in the ballot with the mayors. We need some qualified people, some knowledgeable people. So far, the worst of the worst is all that I can find wanting the council seat. You know, a lady told me I'm just a big hypocrite the other day after I said I stood out there and my ice cream melted talking to someone, but that's how I feel about this city. I love this city, I don't have to live here. You know, financially, I could move to, back to Memphis like many people tell me to go. But I want to see the best for this city. We need a mayor that's interested enough to go down to Harrisburg and demand something be done about these phony nonprofits that have just stolen the city blind. Millions of dollars are gone forever, there's no taking it back. You know, no matter what Gerald Cross tells everybody, this city is in, it's in crisis, it's in bad shape. Here, Harrisburg sends their best up here for the school problem. What does this woman say? Raise taxes. I don't know if she wants us to pay the $200 million in five years or what's on her mind, but she's a disgrace to my intelligence. Last week, just less than a week ago, the greedy teachers' union rehired seven people, no, they rehired five people and hired seven new ones, right under Ms. Finn's nose. Why wasn't this stopped? It's because she doesn't know what she's doing, that's why it wasn't stopped. And I tell you, gentlemen, this idea of collecting rents is ridiculous dribble. You want to get into these people's pocketbook, get Mr. Hinton to start condemning these properties, and there's not a property ever built in this city Mr. Hinton couldn't find fault with. I've heard that from someone in the office. And who cares where the people go? The city's full of empty apartments and houses because of you guys and Mr. Bezoni giving people like Jefferson grants and loans and so forth that have killed us. I don't guess I could bribe you for 10 more minutes, could I?
You have about 20 more seconds, Mr. Elman.
Well, gentlemen, I'm not mad at you all. This city just needs so much, and it's heartbreaking. I talk to six, eight people a week that are such good people. Today coming here, I talked to a gentleman for a minute, and he shook my hand. I've never seen him before, but it just saddens me truthfully. I'm not being hypocritical to see the city in such chaos right now.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
We're still friends, huh?
Last, I'm your city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. You know, at this time with the city, we need somebody as mayor with integrity and honesty. And I know you people already have your mind made up, and I'll be shocked if it's not Councilman Evans. And I think that's the wrong choice, because he already showed that he's dishonest when he was picked to fill the Council Malaskum slot, and he said he wouldn't run for council again, and he did. And now he says if he's picked, he won't run for mayor. If anybody believes that, I have swamp land in Arizona to sell to you. So I hope that's not the choice you made, but I think it is. And I agree with Mr. Bowles about these pools. I go by the Novembreno complex all the time, and it's just filled in, it's just sitting there, nothing's being done. It's just a waste, and to do that to Naug would be a shame. I remember going up there as a kid, swimming in Lake Lincoln, and a lot of people probably don't know what that is even, but I'm old enough to know what that is. And now they're going to make a splash pad. Grownups don't want to go in the splash pad. It's ridiculous, it's a waste. So I hope something changes with that. Now, lastly, last time I was here in June, I talked about the wrestling match that's going to be at the Steentown Mall, August 10. I said it was August 17, but they changed the name, the date, I mean, it's August 10. It's called the Brawl at the Mall, and it features former WWE Hall of Famer Coco Beware, who, they called him the Birdman, he comes to the ring with a parrot on his shoulder. And these people are really entertaining, I just saw them wrestle in Hazelton Saturday night. And plus, local sensation Adina Steele, who's my daughter, she's going to be there. So I will leave this with Kathy, maybe they could post it out here in the hall. There's, in Scranton, you can get tickets, it's Alana Go-Go, it's up on Spruce Street near Northern Light. And it's really entertaining, they put on a good show, I go all the time when they wrestle in Hazelton, but they couldn't get the place they usually wrestle at, so that's why they're wrestling August 10, right outside Crunch Gym in the mall. So I hope a lot of people can make it, because it's really a good show. Thank you for your time, and see you in September.
Thank you.
Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. I have a question for Chris. What are you doing for the next two years, buddy? Or Tim, Tim Perry?
Enjoying life, not getting in trouble, you know, probably help with my family, you know, the normal.
You know what I'm talking about, don't you? Come November? No, a lot of young guys would shy away from some of these job posts because you disrupt your career, and you could be walking away from a better situation. You know, this daytime business, I keep picking on you guys about it, and you know it's Mueller time right now on the television, it's Mueller time. So I still have a working VCR, I'm sure you're happy to know that. You know, Mr. Courtright was so unfortunate because everybody just rushed in and started piling him with money for elections, and there were signs all over the place, double signs and triple signs, and he didn't need it, he didn't need it. And about the rest, well, hopefully, that investigation will expand and continue to expand, because I think people that hand money to public officials are just as bad as the public official, and they don't deserve to walk scot-free. Now, one of the things, two things I'd like to see investigated is the sewer sale, sewer authority sale was $15 million short because we, from what I understand, we had to do upgrades before the end of 2016. And I mean, maybe the water company could have done it for less, probably, but there and again, isn't it worth seven or eight? That I really, it's been bothering me, and the legal fees are one thing, but here we're rarely ever mentioning $15 million that was withheld during the sale because it wasn't money in the bank. And on our audit business, we really need to audit the DPW and decide how much it costs for trash removal. You know, we're not showing people what is actually spent, and keeping in mind that they have to send a crew to your house every week, it has staff, fuel, insurance, the whole works. And irregardless of whether you have one bag or three or four bags and you don't compact it very well or whatever, and we need to decide what the expenses are on that. And we have a court case coming up, so it sure would be helpful if we could show that, yeah, well, we're charging you an extra $20 or something like that, as opposed to getting lambasted in court with somebody not knowing anything about the situation other than, that's what we want, is $300 or $270 if you could pay it early. To me, if you paid a couple of dollars a bag, you would definitely, by the end of the year, practically equal $300. And there's a little bonus in there, I don't have other people's trash on my lawn that can't afford to take their trash out. All righty, I'll cut it at that. Have a good day.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
First, I'd like to start with what will be my weekly city property valuation report. From last Thursday through today, Lackawanna County property transactions totaled 82. Seventeen of these, or 20%, were from the city of Scranton, and all but four of those properties were below the common level ratio when you use the actual sale price as the market price. So we need help, gentlemen. Our property values are tanking. Number two, are you able to provide the city policy on drug testing of our employees? I was shocked to learn that our three DUI strikes and you're still on the payroll firefighter is, is he back on the job? Do we know that?
It's a personnel issue at this time.
Pardon?
It's a personnel issue at this time.
Oh, of course. Okay, next. Should you observe your annual recess for the month of August? I would like to know what is going to happen with the item three, order three items. I hope they're not going to all wait for the second week of September. Is there some way that you can have the city clerk post those someplace on the city website so we can keep up with them? Food for thought, particularly with the audit coming in the middle of the month. That's very important to all of us. So... So, okay, next. Has anyone followed up with Pennsylvania American Water regarding the, the survey that had been done by the Scranton Sewer Authority of all the properties, and how many residents there were, actually apartments? Since, no? Okay, maybe another way to go would be to, uh, put something on the property tax to ask the owners to sign, and specify under penalty of perjury if they do not, uh, if they give false information, how many units of people are living in each of those properties? I, I don't know why we can't do it with a survey. We need to get that straightened out, and sooner rather than later. And next, why was the ECTV tape of the interviews on Monday being held? Or why isn't it being held until after this meeting? I would have thought that was of utmost importance, that as many citizens as possible, who couldn't be here from one to whenever it ended on Monday, would have been interested in that.
We didn't want those broadcasts at live, um, because of the fact that there were other applicants.
Live, I understand, could you, could you wait till?
Well, no, you asked a question, I'll give you the answer.
I did, but I'd like you to answer it in fifth order, because I do have a long list. If I finish early, I'll give you back. Next. Is the city policy to maintain the pension fund below the threshold, which would reduce the LST tax tripling? Is that a state policy?
No, it's not a policy, no.
Okay, fifth order, okay. Next, stormwater and five D. I don't, I don't think this is, this is a good piece of legislation on the resolution. Authorizing a contract that we haven't seen, that we can't review before it's signed, is, I think is wrong. When you look at what's, what are the services are, it again deals with, uh, with the Stormwater Authority. Now, I don't believe that you have ever conducted a, a cost-effectiveness study of whether or not this should be handled by an authority. Have you? Have you ever voted on the authority? No. And, you know, the contract should be important. Look what we did with Arcadis, how long we waited. Is there, is there gonna be a penalty in the contract if they don't deliver on time? And again, it's mostly, we're putting the cart before the horse, we're doing, we're not dealing with the real issues, which are affecting people's lives, we are dealing with paper. This is how many years now, four years since we've, uh, since we've had?
Thank you.
Save the rest for next week.
Is there anyone else who would like to address Council?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate a person to fill the position vacated by former Mayor William L. Courtright, to serve for the remainder of this year, with said term scheduled to expire at twelve noon on January 6, 2020.
A motion has been made to fill the position vacated by former Mayor William L. Courtright, is there a second?
Second.
This motion is to place the nomination on the agenda, on the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to nominate Wayne Evans to fill the unexpired term of former Mayor William L. Courtright for the remainder of the year, with said term scheduled to expire at twelve noon on January 6, 2020.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please. After you.
I'd like to explain my vote. First, I want to thank every person who applied for the temporary appointment to be mayor of Scranton. As I sat through the three and a half hours of interviews on Monday, it was clear to me that there are good people in this city who love Scranton and want to give it, give back in any way that they can, and who are really interested in public service. This has been an extremely difficult year so far to be involved in public service and to be a citizen of Scranton. I'm asking once again the people of this city not to lose faith, because it's my firm belief that we are going to turn the corner, and better days are ahead. And I've always been taught that it's better to light a candle than to curse the darkness. Today, I will be voting for Councilman Evans. At this point in the city's history, there is a need for leadership and a restoration of confidence in the office of mayor. Although the length of this appointment is relatively short, the next few months leading into 2020 will be extremely crucial. We need someone who is ready and prepared on day one, and I believe that Councilman Evans is that person, especially after going through all the interviews for three and a half hours. I have worked alongside Councilman Evans for the past few years, and I'm confident in his abilities to perform the duties of mayor and to begin to rebuild confidence in our city. Based on his interview, he clearly had a grasp of the issues facing the city and an understanding of what exactly has to be done. My decision to vote for Councilman Evans supersedes party affiliation. These are not normal times. We just had a mayor resign, there is so much uncertainty going on in the city, I cannot think of a better person at this time to fulfill a five-month appointment and really keep the city, uh, steady and on its feet. Throughout this process, I have been really guided by the simple question of what is the right thing to do for this city? And this, in my judgment, is the right thing to do, and that is why I'm voting yes for Wayne Evans, thank you.
On the question, um, like Mr. Gahn, I would like to thank every candidate that applied for this. Coming to my decision, I asked myself one question, what is in the best interest of the citizens of the city, and how do we move forward away from these extraordinary times? It's, I'm not basing my decision on which political party someone belongs to, what, you know, where they stood on certain issues in the past, it's how do we move forward? We're in this position right now because a politician put his own self-interest above the interest of each and every citizen, and that needs to stop, if we're gonna move this city forward. So for that reason, that's why I will also be supporting Mr. Evans, thank you.
A couple of quick comments, um, when this first happened, obviously, we knew we had a vacancy. My first call was to Councilman Evans as their finance chair to get together on a number of items that were outstanding with the city. Obviously, for the past three, three and a half weeks, I've been serving as interim mayor, um, keeping the city operations going. And during that time, we've, as a body, have, I, in my opinion, every one of us up here has done a tremendous job of putting together this process, going through this process, hours of interviews. And I also want to thank everyone else that did submit their resumes, there were a number of good candidates, um, that were interested. But Mr. Evans is uniquely qualified as the finance chair for this body. He knows what projects are going on, he knows to pick up right from day one. Because it is such a short-term appointment, it's critical that the person who gets appointed, Mr. Evans in this case, is able to go in on day one and keep the ball rolling, keep the progress that this council has worked so hard over many years to bring our city back, moving forward. As others mentioned, it's certainly not a time for a political decision. This is a decision on who is the most qualified candidate. There are many great candidates that put in, but I don't think anyone could argue that Mr. Evans was not the most qualified, and the best to go in and lead from day one, when he's sworn in as mayor tomorrow. So for those reasons, I will be supporting enthusiastically Wayne Evans for this appointment. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Epstein.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, by unanimous vote, it passes. Before continuing with our regular meeting, um, I want to again thank everyone who submitted a resume for their sincere interest in serving our city, and for the time that each individual dedicated to, to this process of selecting the next mayor. Our next task at hand will be to fill the unexpired term of Councilman Evans, which expires at the end of this year on the first Monday, January 2020. Letters of interest and resumes for the vacant council position will be accepted until next Wednesday, July 31st, at twelve noon, exactly one week from today. As was the case with the appointment for mayor, if you're interested, please do not contact anyone from council directly, please contact our office, submit your resume, um, contact the office, they'll answer any questions you have. And I do want to thank for the, the vast majority of people that applied, they did not come and contact us to lobby on their behalf. We have a process that's in place, and we're gonna, we're gonna honor that same process for this appointment as well. Mr. Perry, any motions or comments?
Um, no, I, just to follow up on, on what was said already, um, you know, this, from day one, this process has been, has been daunting, and it's just been hang, hung heavy over everybody's head in the city. Uh, it, it was scary at times, and, and at, at best, it was, we were unsure of the path that we were going to take. And I'm just proud of, of the way City Hall, the residents, and, and City Council, and, and everybody in here just kind of pulled together, kept business as usual, and, and started that process of restoring the faith in our government, especially our local government here. I, I commend my colleagues on a stand-up job on the way we went about this process. I think we were upfront, upright, and we did everything above board. And like we always have, this is nothing new for us, this is how we operate. And, uh, I'm, although it's, it's unfortunate situation, I'm glad that we were the people here to do the job, because I know we were gonna do it correctly. And we went through this process meticulously, uh, you know, there was emails, phone calls, meetings, and we wanted to make sure everything that was done, you know, you're never gonna make a decision that there's gonna be a hundred percent of the people on board with, that's just an impossibility, and we understand that. But the one thing that we were gonna make sure was, there was gonna be no doubt in anybody's mind of how we went through this process, and how we found our candidate. That was one thing that we wanted to make sure, and I believe that we were successful doing that. And then out of the process of going through that, I believe that we did find the best person for this job, for this city, for the next five months. I have no doubt in my mind that, uh, Mr. Evans is going to go there day one, uh, this afternoon, and start taking care of business. One of the things where I was concerned of is, everybody knows, when you go on vacation, you come back to vacation. One of the worst parts about vacation is coming back and, and digging yourself out of that work that you have to do. Well, now multiply that by not having a mayor for a month, and walking in there day one, all that work that has to be done. So it was crucial that we did not lose one day of lag time. And I believe, uh, Mr. Evans also fits that, uh, aspect of the job too. You know, uh, we're going to get a lot of things done, there's already, there's already, uh, topics that we discussed in timeline, things that were on the back burner, that I think we can take care of now. And, uh, you know, it's just, I'm really excited to turn the page and get moving again in the right direction, which I feel like this was a big step. Step number two is going to be, as Mr. Rogan said, finding, uh, someone to fill that vacancy. And the process that we do to fill Mr. Evans' vacancies is gonna be the same ways we did to fill the interim mayor, uh, step by step, the same way. We'll have dates to follow, uh, we already announced that we are going to, uh, accept letter of interest until next week. And, uh, once we get those letters of interest, you know, we'll set up interview times, and we'll do it the same ways we did for the mayor, uh, step by step. But again, I'm just, I'm real proud of the work we did, and I'm very proud of everybody in City Hall and our residents for stepping up, and it was just, uh, it restored my faith in, in what good government could be when it wants to be. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments?
I got nothing at this time.
Mayor Evans, any motions or comments?
Not yet. First of all, I'll always be a councilman, that's, that's very important for me to say. When I was notified, very recently, that I might be chosen for this position, I did have a chance to write down a few thoughts that I might have wanted, that I wanted to express to everybody. What a long, strange trip it's been. Five years ago, I said those same words, what a long, strange trip it's been, to describe my journey to my appointment on City Council, and here we are again. So I'm humbled and honored to be named mayor for this five-month interim period. For me, it's a culmination of a lifetime of service to our city, and I will do everything that I can to make you all proud. Thank you, Tim, and Kyle, and Bill, and Pat, for your faith in my ability to move this city forward from what may be one of the most devastating events in our history. These are extraordinary times, and we will face them head-on. We will stand together, and we'll stand united in one purpose, to restore the trust and confidence of our citizens, and we will not fail. To the employees of the city of Scranton, many of them were here today, um, I will tell you, you will find an ally to assist you in doing the best job that you can do. I only ask that you continue to work hard and represent yourself with pride as a city employee. To the current cabinet, many of you who also were here earlier today, many of you have done an extraordinary work after being blindsided by someone that you trusted and someone that you believed in. I want you to trust, I want your trust, and I want you to believe that we are only going to do the right thing all the time. To my family and friends, I'll see you in January, just, just kidding. You are the reason that I can do this, you are always have been my supporters, and my advisors, and my compass, and I would be lost without you. We have a lot of work to do, together, it begins tomorrow, and for some of us, it will end on the first Monday in January. But if we do what we set out to do, we will change this city forever. So for everyone that enters this building, for everyone who wants to make a difference, for everyone who loves Scranton, join me, because every day is your chance to make this city a little better, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gahn?
Yes, thank you. Next week is extremely important, uh, because we do have a caucus, a public caucus, with the Pennsylvania Economy League, and we are going to be discussing our eventual exit from Act 47. I, we discussed this in the caucus earlier today, I would like an update on the status of each recommendation that was in the three-year exit plan, I think that's very important. And I will be looking forward to talking to the Pennsylvania Economy League on where the city stands in regards to our exit, uh, from Act 47. I also mentioned in the caucus that I would like updates, uh, on the following properties, 342 Harrison Ave, 107, 109 North Sumner Ave, 950 James Ave, Division Street between Kaiser and Dale Ave, there was an issue with that, uh, area, 824 Pittson Ave, um, so if we could have that before the recess next week, Mrs. Reed, I would appreciate it. Also, there was a resident who has come here, uh, quite often over the last two years about an issue with, uh, stormwater runoff on the corner of Church and Ferdinand Street. I just want to read into the record a correspondence from Jeremy Hall from Pennsylvania American Water, he's a senior superintendent of field operations, and regarding this, uh, problem area, he said the following. "The basin on Church and Ferdinand is a little complicated, but nonetheless, we are taking care of it. The two-by-four box that needs to be installed at the low spot would have an above-ground pipe about halfway to the basin on the corner. We will need to lower the basin on the corner, and then install the new basin at the depression, so the pipe can be deeper. We have this scheduled, and it will be done this year." I wanted to make sure that the two residents who have been asking about this know that it will be done according to Mr. Hall this year, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Very briefly, I just want to mention once again to thank everyone of us sitting up here. Obviously, at times, there are times when council is divided, there are three-two votes, four-one votes. I've been on every side of every vote imaginable, but when it came down to it, the most important decision that has probably ever had to been made by a city council. We were united in the process, we had differences of opinions at times, but we compromised, and every step in this process from day one until today's vote was done on an unanimous basis by every member up here. So I just want to thank all of my colleagues, um, for all of their hard work. I know this has been a tremendous, tremendous amount of work and effort to get to the point where we have today. But I think the end result shows that all of this work was worth it, and we all look forward to working with our new mayor, appointing a new member of council for the remainder of Mr. Evans' term, and we're gonna continue to work for the residents of Scranton, thank you.
5B for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Scranton Police Department and the Borough of Dunmore Police Department to implement a new use-of-force training program.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee, so moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, the only question I have is, uh, how is this being funded? The cities are providing a cash match of forty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars, so before final passage, Mrs. Reed, if you could just find out what account this is coming out of, thank you.
On the ques, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with- city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Troy and Banks Incorporated for the city of Scranton Utility and Telecommunications Audit Services from April 30, 2019 through March 30, 2021.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item five C be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Five D for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Herbert Rowland and Grubik Incorporated for the city of Scranton Stormwater Project Engineering Services.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item five D be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Five E for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a tax-exempt municipal lease purchase agreement between the city of Scranton and Manufacturers and Traders Trust Company for the lease of two new Freightliner Hile high-compaction rear loader Durapack 5,000 trucks for the city of Scranton Department of Public Works for a term of five years.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item five E be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question, I just want to take a second to explain this, the reason for this lease agreement. It's my understanding that in the last few weeks, there has been a, I don't know if you'd call it a slowdown in garbage pickup or not being able to stay on schedule, and that is my understanding that we are down at this point for garbage trucks. So I want to take a second and read the memo that we received from Mr. Bolzoni on this issue. "We have an acute need for additional refuse and recycling vehicles with the recent damage to the 2015 Mack refuse packer. In addition to the accident, the Department of Public Works recently was required to take two vehicles out of service due to rust issues. The refuse and recycling trucks were seventeen and twelve years old. While much of the fleet has been replaced, those remaining older vehicles have been serviced as well as possible given their age and use. The two that were recently taken out of service could not be repaired to any extent considerable, considered serviceable. The remedy will be to lease two packers as noted in the proposal that we're voting on tonight, or today. Those vehicles will replace the truck subject to accident damage, which likely will be a total vehicle loss, and the recycling truck sidelined due to age. The city also has two Mack trucks on order, which will be a direct 2019 budget purchase. The city will opt for the five-year lease. In order to fund the 2019 lease payment, the city will use the 4299-15337 lease budget of one hundred thousand dollars. That line item was dedicated for the ESCO lease, otherwise known as the Energy Savings Lease, which will not require funding until 2020. A description of the two vehicles is attached in the legislation. Those vehicles are fully assembled and compliant with CoStar's pricing protocol, and Mr. Bolzoni apologized for the expedited nature of the request, but unfortunately, we don't have a choice at this time." Thank you.
And just to follow up on that, Wes, residents to hang in there. If your, if your recycling is not picked up on the day it regularly is, for the next week or two, just leave it out for the next, the next day. The closing date estimated for these, these new trucks is August 15th, so we're hoping to have these very shortly. But in the meantime, because of the lack of equipment, if, if your recycling or garbage is a day behind, just leave it out on the street for an additional day. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, six A, no business at this time. Seventh order, seven A, no business at this time.
There's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Meeting adjourned.